I'll handle it!
Let's roll!
Hey!
Do it!
To God!
This should do it! Hey!
Go, go! Boom! Let's roll!
Go on!
Go! This should do it!
Let's go, Wero!
Are you okay?
Thank you, kid.
Are you okay? Do it! Do it!
Spicy! Spicy! Power to me!
Oh, fine then! Number one! This should do it!
Here I go!
You!
Jaa! Jaa! Boss!
Ah, wah 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 wah!
Chewy, Cholo, and Churro, how did you like my passionate heart?
Miss Barrow, we were horribly wrong, eh, Se? Just stood up for our students, for the academy. You're doing it all for us, Homs? Now we understand your love of teaching through passionate battle, Wero.
Those idiots! Betraying me so easily! I'd better come up with a new plan!
Whoa, whoa, whoa! Don't forget about the Knuck! If you hear... what the Knuck is saying... the Knuck'll get a lot of appearances now.
So you're not joining us because you like Miss Barrow?
Yeah, yeah! Looks like the seniors haven't forgotten their demon ways just yet! Excellent! Boom! However, the freshmen and sophomores are as wayward as spaghetti in the sea. Raspberry, you must be prepared!
Of course, all of them are my precious students! Leave them all to me!
Morals are the most defining aspect of this society.
Yes, my lady. The first one is to respect your mother and father, right?
No matter how much they pick on you, or how much they're annoyed by you, it is important to keep respecting them.
I see very little love in that set of morals.
Anyway, we're going to have a Random Parents' Day right now!
Parents' Day? Hey, that's not fair, eh, Se? I didn't see that in the itinerary. This is a horrible surprise, Homs. Aw, no, she must be joking, Wero. She can't bring all our parents on such short notice.
I thought this might happen, so I called all your parents ahead of time.
That's my Jeffrey. Always prepared for everything.
Hmm, looks like our children are being a handful for their teacher. Wasn't it a good idea to come, honey?
Yes, my darling. It's a good chance to see how our children have grown.
Oh my! Who would've thought Master Big Star and Salvatore were the Vato Brothers' parents?
We just found out the shocking truth as well, eh, Se? We have something to brag about now!
What? Are you serious?
We never knew who our parents were because we all looked the same, Wero. It had been a long, styling mystery.
Hmm, that sounds unexpectedly complicated.
This sounds like it's beyond just complicated.
Whoa, dude! I'm Gold Knuckles' father, dude! What's up, dude? I'm Gold Knuckles' mother, dude!
Whoa! They really my mom and dad? I never thought I'd meet 'em now!
Um, I'm pretty sure you're being lied to, man.
You shouldn't ruin this moment, boy. Every family has their own problems. Anyway, with that being said, let your parents savor this moment to see how much you all have grown.
What is with the tension in this room?
Oh, have you not heard? A fierce battle against your parents is the highlight of today's class.
This is what the Netherworld calls Parents' Day. I'm not scared!
Meh, eh!
Do you see how much your children have grown?
Well, well, I'm warned by all the passion that our... children have. I feel so good. It feels as though all the recent laid-back days were only a dream.
Hmm, even if you're a delinquent, you're so much easier to understand than that honorable student-ish dean.
So as I thought. You two came here by order from that director. You guys aren't even married.
Are you disappointed?
What a bummer. I wanted to ask you for tips for a happy marriage.
Right there! Don't start your filthy talk without permission!
I'm sorry. But they shouldn't have acted like they were married in the first place.
I see, so that's the trick. You guys can still be my students if you want.
Uh, well, I was getting bored.
If there is going to be more excitement, I wouldn't mind being your student.
That settles it then!
Damn it! They betrayed me too! All my plans are failing! She has so many friends already! How immoral. I guess she is a delinquent after all. I can't lose to her like this! But for some reason, I'm not feeling all that angry. I should be getting more competitive by now! I'll keep observing her a little more.
Everyone, we're here! This is the Department of Education.
It's been a while since Mal destroyed this place.
I wish I was there too. With all the tension here, the battles must have been fierce.
I was waiting for you.
How do you do, school board president? Looks like you're doing well.
Hmm, hmm. You can't fool me with your polite greeting. A field trip is where students learn how to attack. I've been expecting you to try to get revenge.
Huh, you got me all wrong! I'm here to make up with you.
Huh, what thorough delinquency. A demon should always follow the ultimate demon way. Anyway, I will not approve of such delinquency in a teacher. Have a taste of the improved Department of Education. A PTA that can overpower the PTA! Super PTA, come on out!
Super PTA? I wonder if that stands for Super Perfectly Trained Assassin?
Um, this is a book, right?
I found it lying on the ground and turned it into a PE textbook.
Hey, that's a delinquent trend called recycling! You're pretty delinquent yourself!
N-no, this is a demon act of finding something that's not mine and keeping it.
Well, a PE textbook sounds perfect for us Vato Brothers, Wero. I made paper planes with it, Homs! I'm making sexy flip-flop, eh, Se?
This tension. Send back, Vato Brothers!
Don't worry, Wero. This should be a piece of...
Zeta Beam!
Mr. Gold Knuckles, eh, Se?
What do you expect? I wouldn't get apart unless I did this.
Whoa! That kind of obsession deserves respect.
Anyway, was that a beam coming out of that book, Homs? What kind of power was that, Wero?
We're talking about a super PTA here!
If I win, I'll put pictures of all of you being dissected in this book.
No thanks, I just wanna be your friend. Anyone can be friends if they shook hands after fighting to the death.
Not if you fought to the death.
Don't sweat the small stuff. I'll show you my passion for education!
Alright! Y'all ready for this?
When did you come back alive?
I'm not scared!
Yes, sir!
Are you okay?
What is this "and" all about? Don't you dare touch me!
This is one of the 48 skills of friendship: the make-up handshake. That was a good battle!
Oh my, school board president! You're hurt! Here, take these thousand paper cranes and wish for good health.
My lady, I went ahead and registered you as a teacher. You can proudly call yourself a teacher now.
Ugh, I won't get over this for a while. So demonic for a delinquent. My self-esteem is down to here. I'm going to take a vacation.
You defeated her so much worse than you did the last time with Mal!
Teacher, that was amazing, eh, Se? What a good example of an honor student! Yeah, you're pretty cruel, Wero. So, you were just pretending to be a delinquent, Homs?
I see, you were even tricking your allies. You're a very skilled demon.
Huh? What are you talking about? I wasn't pretending!
Trying to be modest? Not a lot of demons can act nice for that long. I must make a note of this.
Yes, that's it! There is nothing else for me to say. This field trip has been a complete success! Boom!
Wait a second! I wanna be a mild-mannered, delinquent teacher! Not an evil honor teacher! Hey, Mal, you're watching this, aren't you? Back me up here! Tell him I'm an out-of-control delinquent!
Ahahaha, are you?
Mal!
Look at your demonic results! Did you lose your delinquent spirit being a responsible adult?
Are you accusing me too? Raspberries, I can't leave it like this! Class is over for today! Kyoko, Suka, we won't go so easy on him next time! We'll show them how a delinquent is supposed to act!
Yes, my lady. You can count on us.
Anyway, she destroyed the department far worse than I did. I wonder if she's trying to outdo me as an honor student to take over my position as dean?
The season premiere of Barrow High!
Life counseling for teens!
Are you young? Do you have problems? I'll help you through all of your teen crises.
Our first question is from an alien from outer space.
People on Earth hate me. They won't even talk to me. What can I do to make friends?
Leave that to me! You can use one of the 48 friendship skills: Time of Youth. First, bust into their house, then use your passionate fists and fight them till the end. Once the two of you collapse to the ground and start laughing, you guys will always be friends.
That's my lady. What a refreshing way to solve this problem.
This is youth. This is friendship. That's right! Well, everyone, keep sending us your questions.
Everyone, today's topic is social reform!
Social reform, Homs? That sounds pretty extreme, Wero. Man, we're gonna see blood today, eh, Se?
Wait, people, social reform is a good thing.
It's alright to be scared, but I will execute this as planned, as a single delinquent. I came to realize one thing. Volunteering and making up are just child's play. I need to let my precious students see the bigger picture of being a delinquent.
Yes, we need to correct the misunderstanding of our lady being an honor student role model. That's why we're going to conduct a lesson on social reforms today.
That's right. Today, we will patrol the Netherworld to protect the peace. That sounds like a good idea. But will we find enemies so conveniently?
Leave that up to me. I thought this might happen, so I've prepared an enemy dar. I see a target near the gym.
Well, that's convenient.
Near the gym, Esay? Is it gonna be behind the building? That's pretty risky, Teach. That's a legendary hotspot, where a super honor student beat people up, Wido. No teacher has come back from there alive after seeing that student, Huns.
So demons do this kind of stuff too, huh?
I will not be threatened by such a person! I'm actually excited! Let's head out on patrol!
Netherworld patrol? What is she thinking?
What is it, Mal? Are you trying to get in our way, Mal?
No, I decided to observe for a little. It doesn't look like you have much time left to live.
Keep watching us, Mal. I'll show you ultimate delinquency so that you won't get the wrong idea ever again. Let's go, everyone. Follow me!
Yes, Teach!